All right, we'll call to order this meeting of the Pickwa City Schools Board of Education, a regular board meeting on January 30th, 2025. Jeremy, please call and roll.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mrs. McMackin.
Here.
Mrs. Mars.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
Here. Everyone stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everyone has had an opportunity to review the minutes from the December 12th, 2024 meeting, and also the organizational meeting that we held on January 9th of 2025. If there are any addendums or questions about those minutes, we will take them now. If not, I will take a motion to approve both minutes.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
All right. All those in favor of approving the December 12th and January 9th meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, meeting minutes are approved. Now we need a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion from JoJo and a second from Steve. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. Now I'm going to pass it over to Dwayne for a special presentation.
Thank you. Just want to take a moment to thank each of you for everything that you do. This is Board Appreciation Month, and the theme from the state this year is that you are superheroes, and you really are. You do a great job of supporting our district, our students, and all of our work. So each of the buildings have a special presentation for you, and Mr. Clark has asked to go first because he would like to get back to the basketball game for his students. So, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Dwayne.
Are you going to put on the cape and the glasses?
I'm not.
I think you should.
Not going to do that, but thank you. Seriously, every year when we get the opportunity to do this, it really is a good reminder for me personally to really take stock in the fact that we are so supported by you. And I want you to know that our staff and our community really feels that, and we feel the support from you every day, and it really is a blessing to have that in our school district. I talked to my colleagues from around the area and the county, and not everybody has that, and when they don't, they feel it. And when you do have it, you feel it in a much better way. So we are really, really happy that we have such a great board, we have a great community that supports the schools. So really appreciate that. You should each have, from Pickwa Junior High School students, a card that students signed at lunch the other day, addressed to you, and also a little token of our appreciation. So please accept that on their behalf. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Mr. Butler?
Yeah, so we talked with our staff, just our last staff, being about being thankful for what we have. You hear in the news, you see on social media, some of the things that school districts and school boards are having to deal with. But utmost and most importantly, it's about kids' smiles when they walk in the door, keeping them safe, teaching them, and you guys have a big part in that. I just want to say thank you because we do feel supported. You do let us do our jobs, you provide us input along the way, but ultimately you trust us. When you see something, you say something to help. And I want to encourage you, if you ever get down and with stuff that comes your way as a school board member, stop by a school and just see the smiles that walk through the hallways, because we are very lucky to be a part of Pickwa City Schools, and I know our kids feel it, and that's the most important thing. So thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
So real quick, before we jump in, I want to introduce Adriana Chaney. She's an intervention specialist for us at Spring Creek, and she is an aspiring administrator. So she wanted to be a part of a board meeting to see how that all works, and so invited her home tonight to give a speech. So just to be a part of this. So kind of echoing what those guys say, I'm not much of a speech guy myself, but I think Jeff said it really well, when there's a lot of school districts that aren't as fortunate as us to have a board that is willing to support our mission and what we're trying to accomplish in our buildings for the greater good of our students. So on behalf of Spring Creek and myself, very much thank you, because you guys really do a lot, and your support is beyond appreciated. So.
Yeah, I'll just piggyback off of what Ross said, just the never-ending support that you guys show and the involvement that we feel for our staff and students is always so appreciated. So from Spring Creek Primary students, you have a superhero artwork and a little token of our appreciation as well. So thank you guys for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Spring Creek. Next we have Washington.
They're on their way in.
They have to make room around the edge.
Ms. Kale.
How do you follow up with that, Rob?
Hello, everybody. Welcome.
You are.
Hello.
Hello.
Welcome, everybody.
Welcome.
Welcome, everybody. What a great turnout.
You're hiding here for sure.
What's up, babe? How are you?
No, you're good. You're fine.
Ms. Kale said, "We'll just wait out front." I thought, "You only had a few kids?" I said, "No, bring them on in," and now I know why. Why are you waiting up there? Wow, welcome, everybody.
Well, school members, we want to thank you. We want to thank you for what you do to support all of us as the superheroes of this school district. And Mrs. Pence has worked with many of our Washington students this week to prepare a poem for you. So we're going to turn it over to the students.
(singing) The glow of said past care, you guide with wisdom brave and rare. Superheroes strong and true, building dreams for me and you. Your hearts beat loud with commitments called uplifting students one and all. Math and reading, goals and sight, you chart the course, ignite the light. Through every challenge, you stand tall. For every child, you give your all. With strength and passion, you ensure your bright success belong in there. Oh, champions of our students' fight, your work transforms the darkest night. Pickwa's future shines so bright. Thanks to your guidance, might and light. We thank you now, we thank you forever. For building a path of learning together, our gratitude grows deep and wide for the superheroes on our side.
That is aw- and two of you didn't even read. They didn't like-
Yeah.
It was amazing.
Maybe just four of them kneel down.
Would you guys like to go get your photo with them?
There we go.
We might like that.
That was pretty good.
Would you like the board to be up in the picture with them?
Sure.
Would you guys like to go join them so they can get a picture with you? I think they would like that.
Awesome. Big smile.
Thank you, guys.
Great job.
Thank you, Barron.
Yes, thank you. He had pictures tonight, so we all took them from the website. Now, this is a one-time deal. Not every month, nope. He wasn't in the picture, so he didn't have to wear a picture.
You're not the cool kid on the block?
I am. There's one odd one.
I'm by my shirt.
There's one odd one in every group. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Messick has a poem and dance.
Spencer, I hope you're ready, because he's got a call on you.
Hey, let's go ahead and pull up the Keith Smart Kids.
I will tell you, Rob has a really good presentation.
No, actually, our students did. They put together a video for you, and Eric's going to put it on here in a second, I believe. One of the things that we wanted to, when we talked to the staff and about how we wanted to do this, we wanted to show you what are the things. Because we come in here and we say this, that, or whatever, but you don't really visually see it. So they wanted to share with you what it's like to be a Pickwa High School student. Okay, so please enjoy. They did a great job.
Happy Board Appreciation Month. Thank you for all the opportunities I have here at PHS. Let me walk you through my day at school. I start by walking in around 7:00, Okay, first off, we head to anatomy and physiology with Dr. Chin. This is my first off of the day with Dr. Chin. We won't bother her right now because she's hard at work, but did you know that this is the humorous hour? I'm on my way to E fase numero dos. In Spanish three, we get to learn about the different Spanish cultures, but right now we're learning about los números, 100 to 1,000. So this is when I get to walk with my friend Abigail to the upstairs, where I go to pre-calc and she goes to government. Okay, now we're going to my third class of the day, which is pre-calc with Mr. Lidle. Hey, Mr. Lidle.
Hey, what's up?
In honor of Board Appreciation Month, what is your favorite thing about teaching at PHS?
Definitely the support of staff and students. I see them on an everyday basis.
Nice. Okay, thanks.
No problem.
Basically, this class is the hardest. Next, I'll go to pre-epi government. Reminisce on pre-epi chemistry with Miss Hoying, you're Unfortunately, Mr. Wolf's at lunch right now, but in this class, we basically just learn about government and he teaches us about toughness as well. Government and toughness. Next, I walk down to my favorite class of the day, which is media with Miss Bergman. Sometimes when I'm walking in the halls, I run into my friends. What's up? Jericho Burns. See, this is what the environment at PHS gives you looking like. My mouth is hurting from smiling so much. Hi, Miss Bier. Have a good day. This is my in-person class of the day, which is media, where we get to film the school news and be super creative, and we have so much fun in this class. This is what the media room looks like. Miss Bergman, say aye. Over here, this is where we store all of our equipment, like the cameras, the tripods, and over here, this is what, where we write what we're working on for the week. You come this way. This is where we edit. Bethany, what are you working on?
Musical chair segments.
Wow, super fun. Ryder, what are you working on?
I've been making posters for a backdrop that we're going to create for chance.
Wow, super fun. Super fun. Okay, let's go over here to the green screen area. Look at this cool background that we use for basketball media day. So I'm in media, I go to lunch, and then once I'm done eating lunch, I head to the student union to do my online editing Last class of the day. So now I just sit here and I do my online work. My online class for the semester is psychology. Last semester, I was doing intro to communications. Sometimes while I'm working, I like to go over to a coffee shop, an amazing coffee shop that we are blessed to have. We are so thankful for the coffee shop. Get a little coffee or a frozen hot chocolate. This week, I'm working on my chapter one review assignment and a discussion board. Anyways, that's it for today. I'm going to go ahead and work on my editing class. Thank you for all that you do. Bye.
Did a great job, man.
Yeah.
But you know, I think that's kind of one of the things is, you know, we've talked about over the years, you know, redoing the electives and doing, you know, redoing the building and bringing in the College Credit Plus, you know, all these things, and I just wanted you guys to see how it's being used, you know. This is five, six, seven, eight years of you guys supporting us at Pickwa High School and supporting our schools. You know, that's the work that you've done, and you're the work that you're going to continue to do, right?
Right.
Okay. All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. When they came up with the theme and the state sent that to us, I met with Emily and AJ right away and said, "We got to come up with a really cool video." So turned it over to them, and they got really creative, and they came up with a video from the district for you guys to enjoy too. So enjoy the video.
Behold, meet our superheroes, the Pickwa Board of Education, Sean Ford, Steve Frazier, JoJo Mars, Kelly McMackin, John Mitchell. These aren't just ordinary people, they're dedicated individuals who serve our students and district with passion and purpose. Together, they form a powerful team with amazing superpowers such as-
Student focused.
Dedicated to education.
Empower students and all teachers.
This dynamic team of superheroes stands strong with unwavering courage and dedication, always putting the needs of students first. This Board Appreciation Month, let us celebrate each of these unsung heroes, the individuals who tirelessly work to ensure a bright, successful future for every student. Thank you, Pickwa Board of Education. You are superheroes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
End this together.
Thank you.
So then by chance, I ran into Kelly Lyons, who just, just recently, literally recently started making sugar cookies. And I said, "Can you help me just come up with sugar cookies that fit this theme?" And she talked to me for a couple times, and she came up with these amazing, amazing cookies. I'm telling you, they're really amazing. So here is a gift for each of you from us. And you're going to be astonished by these.
That's awesome.
You really are.
Wow.
If you ever need cookies, contact Kelly.
Wow.
That was a sample. Tony, good?
They're very good. They're very delicious.
I was impressed. She's very, very artistic. She did a great job.
Tony's role was test tasting.
Clearly. I know what I'm doing.
That's awesome. That's awesome.
I'm sorry, that's pretty good.
And she did the decorating.
Yeah, yeah.
They don't look clean.
I know. I wasn't allowed to eat any of those.
So in summary, I do hope you understand how much we do appreciate you. We really do find you to be our heroes. So thank you so much for all that you do.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you, guys. We wouldn't be able to do it, obviously, without you.
You guys make it easy.
All right, well, we appreciate that very much. And so I think I speak on behalf of the whole board, and it's an honor that we get to sit here and do what we do for you guys and for the district. So thank you. Next on the agenda, nothing on the hearing of public agenda items. So we're going to move down to the treasures report.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. Great news for the audit update. The audit is complete. We had it done before December 31st and got everything submitted, and the audit came back clear. So we have a, not just clean audit, but a very clean audit this time, like there's nothing. So that's good news. That doesn't happen very often. Mid fiscal year report, financial report. So we're halfway through the fiscal year, so I thought I'd bring you some information about where we stand. The easy thing to do is say, "Well, it should all be about 50% since we're halfway through." Except for property taxes, won't be that way, because we're collecting the bigger half currently. So everyone's received their property tax bills, unfortunately. But the, when your escrow pays, you pay more at the beginning of the year, so this payment that comes up is more than what the second payment is. So that's why it's 44%. Otherwise, everything is on track with where we expect it to be. Income tax is up about 6% over what we expected it to be, and we just got the most recent payment for that, and it was on target, maybe a little less than what we thought it was going to be. So it's going to pan out to be pretty close in this case, because that just came in yesterday, I believe. And then the restricted grants and aid, you will see, it says 96%. And the reason why it's 96% is because when this forecast was created, we didn't know if we were going to qualify for CEP, and when we did qualify for CEP, and you're saying, "What is that?" That is where we're able to offer students free breakfast and lunch across the district. So when we qualified for that, and that increased the number of students in the computer system that says free and reduced lunch, and so therefore, we ended up with twice as much as what we thought we were going to have, because the district's about 53% free, reduced lunch without doing CEP. So that's how we ended up doubling that number. So that'll change when I do the forecast. The next time, we'll update that. Otherwise, you see, we're at 53% of revenue, which is a good thing. And then down, you will see the expenditure end of this, and our expenditures are exactly at 50%, so that's where they should be. You see the personnel and the insurance is exactly at 50%. Purchase services, again, we pay for some things ahead of time. It's at 55% when the school year starts. Our supplies and materials are running well at 36%. Capital outlay is at 43%, and that will also change because we weren't expecting to buy a dump truck. So the next time that we do this report, you'll see that that'll be over 100% because the dump truck was more than what we had planned to spend this year in that line item. So it will change. But at the end, we're exactly at 50% for expenditures, and we're running where we expected to be at this point. So things are going well. We're still planning on ending the year in the black. So everything's going well. Are there any questions? Any questions about the monthly financial reports that were in there? The only other thing we have tonight is the change in payroll adjustments according to the PEA contract. These are the people who have completed their master's degrees and are moving up columns. And then we also have the tuition reimbursements. So those are both attached on those two items. Were there any questions about those? And that's all I have.
All right, any questions for Jeremy? All right, Jeremy, thank you for everything. I will take a motion to approve the treasurer's agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second, and then we need to call roll.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mrs. Mars.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
All right, treasurer's agenda is approved. Moving on down to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. You heard Mr. Messick talk about how great it's been that you've supported things over time, and he tried to give you a glimpse of that. One of the other programs has been STEM. We've worked over a five-year period under Scott's leadership to try to get STEM K through 12, and this year, we finally realized that. So I thought it'd be a good time to bring him in and one of our teachers, Jen Everett, who is our STEM teacher at Spring Creek, to tell you about STEM, what they do, and what we're accomplishing with it. So Mr. Bloom and Jen.
So I'll go first, because she has all the fun stuff to show you when we're done. It has been a goal here to have kids with, have the opportunity for STEM learning every year that they're with us, all the way from when they arrive to when they graduate. The other foundational goal for this is that it's for every student. We don't have a STEM, "Hey, just you get to try this." We have every student who has the ability to work with everything that we offer. And to me, that is at the core of what we are trying to accomplish, so that all of our students have that ability to find out what they love to do, what they, where their aptitudes are, and what gets them excited about learning, which is exactly what this is. To that end, we added four through six STEM coursework this year. It's going fantastically. Again, if you want to smile, as Heath said, feel free to jump in there. You can watch kids do some pretty exciting things. I put together, just to, I put in front of you, just an overview really quickly of the way that we do this. We really work with the design thinking process when it comes to our STEM programming. And what that means is, we work with kids to understand what they're trying to do, define a problem, ideate, which is basically, "How do we solve this? How do we, what do you want to do to solve this problem?" Prototype, they build stuff, they try it, and then they test it out. "Let me see if it works. Let me see if my LEGO robotics does what it wants to do, or does it fall apart? Let me fix it." And that is a core way of thinking across the board. We never really deviate from that. It may look differently, we're always following that. We are, the materials that we use are vertically aligned. When we, when students come to us in kindergarten, they're using the same basic robotic systems that they will use through at least sixth grade, if not further. In fact, the LEGO robots that we use with kindergarten have a direct cousin with the robotics they use in pre-engineering at the high school. They're a little more sophisticated, they snap together exactly the same. And I would have kindergartners be able to look at what a pre-engineering student does in 10th or 11th grade and go, "Oh, I know how to do that." In fact, here, move, I'll show you how it works. That's how our kindergartners would do it, because they're not afraid to try anything. So that vertical alignment of materials is important because each year, our students build on the prior year's learning. I've talked to our STEM teachers and reminded them, think of this as, instead of, I only have them for a week or two weeks at a time, you have them for six years of STEM learning. So when you add that up, we have hundreds of opportunities for students to learn. And once we started to think that way, it really helped us to go, "Okay, this is a journey that we want kids to, to be able to, to go on." I didn't, Jen did bring some of our neat materials here. I do want to highlight a few. We do use LEGO brick cues. Those are non-programming. Those are all about falling. Can I build what I see? We use LEGO programmable robotics. Those robotics use what is called icon-based coding, a drag-and-drop. You know who else does? Most manufacturers across the country use drag-and-drop programming. If I want to build something, that's how I teach my CNC machine to do it. So our kindergartners know how to do that. We just added LEGO Coding Express. I can't wait to see those. Our kindergartners will be programming trains, little trains that they build to follow a program, and they use bricks to do that. So they're actually putting together the concept of how a program works. We have upgraded our 3D printers. We have, well, I just delivered yours, so we have three in each of the K3 buildings, four through six, they have eight 3D printers that are going full-time, and we have them throughout the junior high and high school. Students are doing 3D designs and making what they designed. Again, you want to see a student be really proud, ask them to see the thing they designed and 3D print it. and 3D-printed. Look, I made this thing, and it won here a day ago, I just made it. The Aura is actually sitting in my office while I learned how to use it. We were fortunate enough to have a Lunguard Foundation grant purchase these for us. The fancy word for that is a cobot. Cobots are robots that are designed to work next to people, which is exactly, again, what I would see in a design setting, an industrial setting. Those cobots will go in grades four through six. To give you just an idea of how sophisticated they are, we bought two, and the bill for that, and again, thank you for the foundation, was $13,000. These are real machines that they will get to use. We use snap circuits, so they learn how electricity works. We do that from K through high school. You notice that a lot of, and then I'll turn it over to Jen, because you don't want to hear what I have to say too long, but you'll notice that everything that we do has two connections. One is to some kind of set, science or standard here in Ohio. For example, our STEM teacher at the junior high is teaching some of the electronic standards that would normally be in the classroom, because we already do that. She's using snap circuits to teach that. They also have a career-based connection. When I learn how the wiring in my house works, which our students do, they'll figure out how my doorbell works, or how my ceiling fan works. That's a career connection. That is something that people do for a living, and other people hire because they don't want to burn their house down. That's exactly what they're learning. So we will continue to make those connections with everything that we do. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jen, because she's going to show you what some of those things look like.
Awesome. Thanks, Scott. Well, I'm excited to be here with you all tonight. I want to say thank you to all of you, especially our board members, and open up an invitation if you ever want to play with LEGOs.
I'm sorry, can you talk into the microphone so the people can hear? There you go.
Come and see us anytime, you're welcome in my classroom, any minute of the day. You don't have to make an appointment, just show up. I'm on the second floor out in the hallway. Just come up, you can come right on in and have class with me. I'd love that, anytime, I mean that. Anyway, with, I want to share with you tonight a snapshot of what you might see in one of our STEM classrooms anywhere in Pickwa. Basically, you could think of me tonight as the cheerleader for our STEM department. I feel like I'm hiding behind this microphone. But anyway, critical thinking is a huge component of what we embed in our students, like Scott said, K through 12. But when you really focus in on our elementary kiddos, K through three, or K through six, maybe, critical thinking is what they're walking away with and they don't even know it. So I found myself constantly saying, no, take what you know and make that grow. And I found myself saying that so many times, that it's now a banner on my wall, because that's basically what we're trying to get kids to stop and think, is you know something, so take what you know, and let's take that, and let's just blow it out of the water. And then tomorrow, you're going to take what you now know and do that again and again, and their thinking just continues to grow. So with that being said, I'm going to kind of, and give you a snapshot. A demo. So problem, like Scott covered, problem solving, decision-making, communication, collaboration. I'm going to show you some samples of this. Two different areas I'm going to highlight tonight are renewable and non-renewable energy sources, and the second one is computer science. So these kiddos are, two years ago, our renewable energy wind turbine competition, which has become a yearly event, and we partner with Hartzell Propeller. Several of their engineers like to come in and work with our kids. And then the whole progress, the whole process ends up on a big lift day, where the kids get to, we call it, have the big, the, like, small group of kids, whoever has built the turbine that lifts the most weight gets to go to the big lift. So that comes down to six kids in the whole entire third grade. But like Scott had mentioned, every kid has done this project with turbine building and understanding the engineering process, renewable, non-renewable energy, how we can make that do work for us, how do I create the energy, turn it and transfer it into mechanical energy to lift pennies, the weight of, I could go on and on and on. There's so many great things that connect with this project, but at the big lift, we find out who the big lifter is. So I want you to see a small video clip of these two young men in the middle, who, this was the very tail end, right before they won. The excitement in the room was unreal. So, we'll enjoy this. One more. They're looking at the other team, and they're like, is it going to be us or them?
Focus, Holland, focus.
I mean, it's like, the whole place was, it's unreal. And that's not just the two little boys screaming, that is the entire third grade, and the engineers from Hartzell's together as community saying, we did it. And the amount of pennies that we lifted last year, that was, that was two years ago. Last year's amount was 350 pennies, which is saying a lot for just a little bit of cardstock and stick, so, engineering design. Taking that down, vertically downward to second grade, we engineer puffmobiles. We use renewable energy, which was, would be with, through the puffing of the car. They go to the, they go and they design, they build, they test, they design, they build, they test, they go, and you'll see kids puffing on the floor on their bellies, and they're like, pushing their car forward. The other kid is timing them in 30 seconds, how far can I get my puffmobile? And then they're learning about distance and measurement, how do I make it go even farther? They're coaching each other. And then, again, we have like, a big puff in the gym with six of our second graders in the gym, as you can see in the picture. Behind these kids on the floor are the leaderboards. Every second grade grader's distance is on that leaderboard. So they, they just grow in mathematics, engineering ideas, we're, you know, they're connecting that with renewable energy. Going down to my first graders, we'll go to the next slide. They are engineering sail cars. So we're using, again, that wind power to measure distance, the engineering design process. And this year, we've, I've added in another component with this whole lesson, that they are going to now carry cargo. How far can my car carry the cargo? So she's going to give you a little information about her cargo. How many pennies do you have to count? And how much, how many grams of weight is seven penny?
14.
Good job. Let's see if their puff car can hold 14 grams of weight. You're going to follow it. So she's seeing that. The kids are standing, and there's so much that I could tell you about that little moment that goes into that, for first graders, to understand grams. How many grams is a penny? How can I estimate the distance? How can I redo the sails so I can make this renewable energy do work for me? There's just so many cool things. And then when you go down to the kindergarten level, back in the back of the room, I do believe there is a LEGO creation next to someone in here that I thought might be able to manhandle a kindergarten thing back there. Do you want to keep gentlemen back there, make that move? Nicely done. Thank you, well done. So, they're looking at the movement of the pieces of our LEGO Steve Park, and they're understanding when they build, and they look at the schematic picture, how to make that move. So with this being said, it's all about movement, it's all about energy, it's all about putting things together, seeing what happens when I try this and try that. Taking that in mind, we go into a computer science type of learning as well, where they're going to now take things and make them move, and build them per the, you know, instructions. But what, one of my favorite things to do is to work on the parts and pieces of the overall learning, like coding, like, how do I follow a plan? How do I work with a partner? But then, let them loose with it, and let them create their own type of building. So recently, I had a team of kids that were second graders and third graders, and this was literally built within a matter of 10 minutes. I was teaching, they were in the back of the room, I said, go. And they decided to build a park. After my class of third graders was over in 40 minutes, another crew of third graders came in, and I had, actually, I take that back, the second graders when they came in. And I had two second graders go back and look at the build, and I said, add to it. And so they added some parts to it. Well, then I brought all these kids together, and they, they decided that this was going to be a park where you could go and have fun. And they have put in here for us tonight, and ask you to take a look at this in just a second, I'll show you what to do. And, ask you, Mr. Diddle told us. They have coded a swing to swing, and they've coded a cable car to give rides over here. And this little hut is a bumper car, even though those are wheelchairs. They said, we didn't have any bumper cars, so we used the wheelchair. So these are their bumper cars at the park. And I say, three, two, one, you're going to click the yellow arrow, and you can see how they coded them to move. Three, two, one. And so the coding that is now on the computers that they've learned to do, I had nothing to do with, because they'd already learned how to use it, but then they applied it on their own to make it the way they wanted it. You know, I don't know if you noticed the swing, but it's only making a quarter turn out of a whole circle. What is a quarter? How do I write that? How do I code that? How do I think that? A whole circle, a whole dollar, a whole football game. We could go on and on about just a quarter. But in coding, it's a .25. So if I want my whole circle to only go a quarter turn and a quarter back, there's a lot of critical thinking going into that, to make it happen on a computer. So with that being said, I think I need one more slide. Here is another student in the third grade explaining that she created a chicken coop, which is a real-world situation, and her coop is, the purpose of it is to keep her chicken safe and comfortable. Okay, this is Leah's LEGO Essential Chicken Coop, and she's going to explain how it works.
The light.
Sensor.
The sensor is going to.
Sense what color?
Sense white, and then let's go turn on the light, and then turn on the alarm.
And what's the purpose of the light and the alarm?
To scare away the predators.
Okay, go ahead and start your button. Your code, and. She had a little sound effect there, so that, you know, they could double scare them away. But I just wanted to bring with you, bring, bring some pieces and parts of our world to you tonight, and help you to understand that we just can't say thank you enough to Scott, our department, our working together, our kids, their growth. Each year, I'm just amazed at when, when we start a new year, I write out my plans, and I always have to stop and say, wait a minute, these kids coming in have new skills. They have different skills. They no longer are coming in not knowing what coding is, or not knowing what, you know, how, how to think critically, and how to think creative. I have to up the game every year, because I know they have new set of skills. So, and that's due to our district, that's due to a lot of, a lot of funding. Technology is not cheap. And I'm proud to go out and say, I work in a district that has STEM K to 12. And I, I can't say it enough, it seems like Scott and I have this conversation a lot, that whenever we are talking to other people in public school districts and area schools over the state of Ohio, whatnot, we're different. We're different here. Not many schools have STEM K to 12, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Makes me want to go back to school.
I do want to, I told you about the vertical part of what we try to do, that, you really need to see the turbines when they do this, because she wasn't exaggerating. There's an entire gymnasium full of kids whose turbines didn't win, who are cheering on the ones that do, and that's pretty powerful. But those third graders will revisit that turbine build as seventh graders. And they use the same material, type of materials. The seventh graders have their own wind turbine, or wind, excuse me, wind tunnel. It's four big fans and a giant box. If you want to see something fun, watch seventh graders kind of work their way into a wind tunnel as they're trying to test their turbines. And they actually use a volt meter to measure electricity. Those are skills that hearken back to four years earlier, and they're still using them. So that is what we're trying to do. We're trying to instill those skills that they carry with them. And we do thank the board and the district for, for being supportive of that. It's, as Jen alluded to, it's not every place that will do that, and our kids are better for it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good job, Jen.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
One of the many responsibilities that Spencer has is musical practice, so he is heading to musical practice right now, so we look forward to that in March.
Thanks, Spence.
Just some quick updates. Wanted to update a lot of people at home for our senior class, because we always want to make sure that they stay updated, and we're to that point in the year where some, some exciting things are happening for them. So we did have a FAFSA work session, actually, today, to help parents with their, filling out that information, but the guidance counselors are committed to that ongoing. So any parent of a senior that wants to work on that, just contact their child's counselor, and then they could get help for that. All the college-bound seniors should log on to Naviance if they want to see the list of current scholarships, and that will continue to be updated, so they should continue to reach out to their counselors or to go on to Naviance and see that. Senior photos are due for the yearbook on March 1st, and they have highly advertised that, they put links out where kids can just click that QR code, upload them very simply, so we want to encourage the seniors to do that. And then new this year, we have a senior info link on our website, so seniors and parents can just go to www.pickwa.org, and at the top right, there's a little graduation cap that says senior info, and if they click on that, all the information that we have right now up to this point is on there, it's been updated this week, and I believe.
February 19th? You're having your first senior meeting, or 18th or 19th?
The first senior meeting. Again, it's just hard to believe that we're going to be meeting with the senior class to talk about graduation and all those important things coming up. So it's all right there, it's very accessible to parents, we'll try to get stuff out on social media as well, but just wanted to get that out there. For all other students, College Credit Plus meeting is happening on February 6th, so if they haven't attended a meeting in the past and want to take CCP classes, they should attend that meeting at least once in high school. Scheduling is going to begin after we get our courses study approved tonight. And then Mr. Messick has done a really great event the last couple of years, I believe, our elective fair, where the junior high school kids can come up to the high school and look at all the different extracurricular activities that are available for them, so that when they transition, they have something to look forward to, and they get excited about it. And they have students, and the coaches, and the advisors all right there answering questions, and trying to just really get kids excited about that. So that will be on the 14th of February. If you're interested, you're welcome to go out there and see that, it's a great, it fills up the gym, and it's like a, a big convention center. I mean, it just, it's loud, it's noisy, and kids are excited, so kudos to them. Just want to do a shout-out to our spelling bee winners. Espen Atha from the Pickwa Junior High School was our champion, and Jackson Kemp from the PCIS was our runner-up. So Espen will go on to the regional spelling bee. And we're kind of ending our winter sports programs, and a big shout-out to all of our athletes for everything that they've done. Special shout-out to Holden Hildebrand for placing first in the MVL in both the 200 and the 500 freestyles, so a real standout. He has been, I think, since I've seen him swim, so exciting to see him compete at that level. Last, we want to honor a teacher, Mr. Wyatt Heinz. Congratulations to him for being selected as the Ohio Music Education Association's OMEA Young Music Educator of the Year for the state of Ohio.
Wow.
That's really. So this award recognizes an OMEA member with eight years or less of teaching who demonstrate excellence in music education. It acknowledges their commitment to the principles of effective music teaching and contributions to his students, the school district, and the music education community. And he is very networked in that community, and has brought so much to our, our program, so we're very honored for that. Myself, one of his current students, a former student, Tom Westphal and Carol are going to go up to Cleveland on this day and be there with him as he accepts this award. So congratulations to Wyatt. And Mr. Ford has something for you.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
You're going to have more awards than Jeremy has, if you keep it up.
That's right. Get her done.
And if you believe you can, because he does pep band and show choir, marching band, tennis. tennis, and lots of other things, so. Would you like to sing anything? If you do, if you would, go to the...
Just thank you very much for everything you do. Like, I am so thankful to be here in this district and have the support and opportunities to do the things that I'm doing. I'm really, really excited and honored to be selected for this award and get that next week at our convention. The convention takes place in Cleveland, and it rotates between the different large cities in the state. It's the third largest music education associate, or the Music Education Association in the country. And we're really excited that, you know, music's so supported here and all that, and I'm really thankful to be able to go up there next week and accept the award. And then I'm also able to present two sessions on Friday next week for the conference and whatnot. So I'm going up there for that as well, which is really exciting. So, thank you all very much.
Good job. Thank you.
And that's it for my report.
All right. Now we're moving straight on to the superintendent's agenda.
Okay. Break, recommendation for the attached list of donations and grants. So, you might have seen our really nice scoreboard that we have in our gymnasium. Edison made a large commitment to helping us do that, and they were doing that in payment, so we just received that sponsorship from Edison. We have several that donated to the Pickle Show Choir, we have some donations to the band and our student leadership group, as well as the Pickle Education Foundation grants have come through on our way as well. So, thank you to all of those donors for everything they do to support our programs in our schools. Approve the 25 Pickle High School state testing schedule. We bring that to you each year. We do a modified schedule, because we have to be able to get all that testing in, and to be able to do that, we need to use staff in different ways to get it in in the amount of time that it takes. So, we have that scheduled in there for you. Implement, I'm sorry, recommend the board approval of the Pickle High School program course of study for 25, 26 school year. Mr. Messick, do you have anything you want to share about that?
No, I think... I can't figure that out. We, like I said, we continue to listen to our students on the classes that we're offering, not what we think they should take, but what, you know, the direction the kids are taking, especially when it comes into College Credit Plus. We're going to do a little bit more conversation with them in the next meeting about all the changes that we've made. But, we've added additional College Credit Plus. Right now, our students can earn 53 college credits while in our building while attending Pickle High School. So, trying to get it to seven more, so we can get a full 60, so you get two full years. But, yeah, it's pretty impressive, guys. So, once again, you're doing it right, so thanks. But otherwise, other changes, not really, not, not a lot, we've got things pre-dialed in. Just some, you know, we're reducing some of the, like, the law enforcement program, we're making a junior/senior program instead of just a senior program, so that would really be the only changes. Okay? Any questions? I'm sorry. Good? All right?
Thank you, Mr. Messick.
Thank you.
And thank you for your leadership, too, because he does really listen to the kids and bring in what they want, so I really appreciate that. Recommend the board approval of the attached list of equipment for disposal and removal from the inventory of the Pickle City School District. And recommend the board approval of the attached list of library books from Spring Creek for disposal and removal from their inventory. Again, those are always books that are just no longer in circulation, they might have worn out, so we replace them over time. So, and that's it for me, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Dwayne? All right. I will take a motion to approve the superintendent's agenda. We have a second?
Second.
All right. Jeremy, please fall roll.
Mrs. Mars.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mrs. Mc Mackin.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye. All right. Superintendent's agenda is approved.
Thank you.
Moving on to Mr. Lyons with the personnel agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. I just want to highlight item number eight and nine. We have two longstanding educators, outstanding educators. I had the opportunity to work with both of them at Pickle High School, they've been here respectively. Janet Crowman started in 96, and Paula started in 1992, so more than 30 years of service to our kids for both of them. And, I don't know, maybe had the rules not changed a little bit in STRS world, maybe they would be here a little longer, but certainly going to be a huge loss for Pickle City Schools, and especially, talk about Paula, served in different buildings as well, and I think Janet did her whole career between the junior high and the high school. And like I said, fortunate to have been able to work with them, but I think the most fortunate part's the number of kids that they were able to serve during that time, and, and help out in, in their high school careers or their junior high careers. So, thank you to them, we'll hear more about them as we get closer to retirement time, but they're, we're definitely going to miss Paula and Janet at the high school, so. Outside of that, just a reminder, as we get down to the bottom of the agenda, we do approve the classified subs, sometimes there are updates to that, we do have a new update on that in there, which is why you have an attachment there. And then, home instructors, sometimes we have to approve new, depending on how many kids we have that need home instruction. The classified and substitute teachers, which are the certified people, and then supplemental contracts and volunteers. Volunteers have to be approved every five years when they are going to do an overnight trip or something like that. We make sure, or be supervising students in the building, we make sure we get them approved. So, outside of that, that's what I have for the personnel agenda, you got the update. Any questions for me? Any of those things? So, line agenda, which is a good thing.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Now, a motion to approve the personnel agenda.
So moved.
Second? All right. Steve with the motion, Sean with the second, and Jeremy, please call roll.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mrs. Mc Mackin.
Aye.
Mrs. Mars.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye. All right, moving on, we have no old business to discuss, but there is some new business.
Yeah, there are two board policy updates. One of them is on Senate Bill 29. You actually approved that in the fall, all districts had to have that approved, it was an update on how we handle technology with students. When it got implemented across the state, there were just some gaps and things that happened that the law had kind of dictated that made them go back and reconsider some of the points to it, because it was actually very difficult to implement and be accountable for. So, the, the legislators revamped it and made some corrections to make it more able to be implemented properly. So that's what this is. There's no real change in the intent, they just added some different features and took away a few things that allowed schools to implement it better. So, there's a first read on that, and then the other one is just some procedures in the model policies for special education have been changed by the Ohio Department of Education. So we have to update that to their website by March, indicating that we updated our board policy to meet those requirements. So, this will be the first read, February, we'll do the second, and then I'll update, I'll upload that to the Ohio Department of Education and workforce and get that met. But our teachers are already up on it, Amy's on it, we just have to have board policy that updates those procedures. So, nothing really big, we just have to have it formalized. That's it.
All right. And we'll vote on that in February.
Yes.
All right, moving on. Next thing is select possible dates for a board work session.
Yeah. So you might remember that our district lawyer had said, "There are just common things across the state that he works with districts on with boards, they're, they're just common topics." And he offered that to you, and said, "If you would like to do something like that, he can come and give updates as relative to our board policies," and you all kind of thought you were interested in that. So I thought we would select a couple of dates. He said he's open pretty much most of February, March, and April. He can do one larger session or two smaller, however you want to do that.
Larger.
I'm guessing four hours or less, three to four hours, or maybe two, two-hour sessions. So, either way, it's fine with him. It's what, what you want to do. I know most of you would come after work to do that, so it's a matter of how long you want to sit and try to retain and get information, so.
What's that? Yeah, I know, right? In seven weeks, he's going to be fine.
Seven weeks, he's going to be fine. So maybe, I'm just throwing this out there, maybe two hours will be good. I, I can tell you, we go through board policy, and it's, it can be laboring sometimes, to really attend to it and get what you want.
And he's okay with coming down?
Oh, he's...
Because he's coming from Cleveland, correct?
He's good, yeah. Yeah, but he'll probably schedule, because he works with a lot of districts, so he'll probably schedule other things in the area, stop by and visiting neighboring districts and places that he works with, too, so.
Okay. Yeah, then everyone, okay with two work sessions, then, yeah.
Do you want to, does somebody want to throw a date out, that we can all look and see availability? Is, is four too early? Sean, do you?
I get off at four, but...
At four, so we could go...
I mean, I could probably put in to get off earlier, maybe go in earlier. I could probably make it work out.
Like, 4:15? Would that work? Like, so, so does anybody have a date you want to look at around 4:15?
Anytime after.
February 17th. I'm here after that. I'm on the floor until then.
Okay.
How about the 25th?
I would not be available that day.
Okay.
Not after...
What days in the week are good for people?
Whatever.
Any day?
Um...
Any day?
Any day, except for Friday.
Okay. How, I'm going to say Wednesdays are really better for me.
Wednesdays are good for me, too.
Okay.
So if we can maybe look at a Wednesday?
And if you can't do February, we can go to March.
The 19th?
What, yeah, the...
19th of February?
What time would we start?
4:15.
Eh, no, I can't make that one.
Okay.
But I can do the 26th or the 12th.
26?
Steve's not back.
26 is at 4:15. Yeah, 26.
February 26th?
As a possible date? Okay, I'll, I'll propose them to him, and then I'll confirm it with you, so.
And then March 5th?
You want to do March 5th as the backup? That's...
Well, that'd be the second one.
Yeah, the second one. That's Ash Wednesday, I don't know if that makes a difference, though.
I won't be here the 5th through the 8th.
Won't be here?
Not after...
So the 12th?
The 12th.
12th.
That's March. Okay, I'll propose that one to him, see if he's available. Let's just throw one more date out there, just in case he can't, and then...
Do we want to do, like, two dates in March? Like, do the follow-up with the 26th?